All right, let's get this meeting started for a regular city council meeting of February 20th, 2024. If you'd join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Please note that all members of our council are present. We have one addition, it's not really an addition, but it is an addition, and one deletion. There is some additional airport funding that had came in for payments and claims. And then there is one deletion under item number five, land use and legislation committee. There's been a question about the ordinance, and we're just looking into the question a little bit deeper before we start the process of bringing in the ordinance. So with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition and the deletion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by councillor Kayler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we go to the approval of the minutes. We have our regular city council meeting of Monday, February 5th, 2024. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have the minutes of our committee of the whole meeting on February 12th, 2024. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll move.
Motion by councillor Kayler.
Second.
Second by councillor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we go to the resolution for the transfers, payments, and claims. We have a transfer going to the permanent improvement of $66,666.66. That's coming evenly from the 601 water and the 603 sewer in the amount of $33,333.33. Going to the 403 reserve for capital outlay is $20,567.25. And that's coming from the 601 water in the amount of $14,693. And the 603 sewer in the amount of $5,874.25. For a total transfers of $87,233.91. International Falls accounts payable claims is $587,762.5. International Falls library board claims of $6,180.6. And the airport claims of $31,797. For a total accounts payable and our claims of $625,739.11. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the payments and claims.
I'll move.
All right, we have a motion by councillor Kayler.
Second.
Second by councillor Wegner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Anybody in the audience have anything to bring forward to the council today? There will also be an opportunity at the end of the meeting. We'll go down to old business. This is the second and final reading of contract ordinance 988 for the 2024 Tower Number Two reconditioning project. Chair would entertain a motion for the second and final reading.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by councillor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Approve the second and final reading of the ordinance number 52 of the fifth series, amending 3.2 sewer usage regulations. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the second and final reading of that ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by councillor Kayler, thanks. Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Finally, number three, we have the second and final reading of ordinance number 53 of the fifth series, amending 3-40 rules and regulations relating to water service. Chair would entertain a motion for that final reading.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Wegner.
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. We have no items on the consent agenda this evening, so we'll go down to new business. Acknowledge the end dates for paid on-call volunteer firefighters as presented. We have three names, and one of them is going to remain active as an EMT. Chair would entertain a motion to acknowledge those dates of paid on-call volunteer firefighters.
I'll move.
We have a motion by councillor Kayler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. And I will vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Approve a contingent offer of employment ending, pending satisfactory completion of the pre-employment requirements for vacant mechanic position. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that offer.
I'll move.
We have a motion by councillor Wegner.
Second.
Second by councillor Buller. And we don't have a potential start date yet, but if they accept the offer, we will move forward with this. We have a motion in a second.
I got a question.
Please.
What is the satisfactory completion that is needed to be done by the mechanic? Do you have any idea?
Sherri?
We anticipate that we'll have that information probably even tomorrow.
What is it that we're waiting on?
Um, we didn't list the specifics in there just because we haven't received all the information yet, but it could be a variety of things typically when offers are offered contingents. So like for paramedics, EMTs, it might be we're still checking on their licensure, and we haven't received it back from the state yet. Or for the police, they have a very extensive background check that they go on. We may be waiting on, you know, a reference to get back to us. It could be their driver's license check because their position requires driver's license, so we have to wait for that information and the availability of the PD to be able to run that report. So we, there were three contingencies that we were waiting on. We have two of them. And like I said, I fully anticipate to have the other one in the next day or two.
Excellent. Any other questions, since we have Sherri up here? All right. We have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. And I'll vote yes, thank you, Sherri. Approve an updated mutual aid agreement between the International Falls Police Department and the Kootenay County Sheriff's Office. She's not here tonight. Betty, do you want to just give us a quick rundown of why we're updating this? I mean, the city attorney, could you give us a quick update of why we're updating this?
Yeah, so Chief Koschek contacted me last week about getting a new mutual aid agreement between the sheriff's office and the city police department. I don't know kind of all of the specifics of why they were wanting a new one other than potentially the other one was outdated and just to have an up-to-date version of that. The other possibility is I don't know that he knew where that was, so we needed a new one. Kind of the background on how this came up is there was the warrant executed out in Ray quite a while ago that Chief Koschek brought up. And without something like this in place, it went fine. But there's, you know, questions on if someone got hurt there or something of the like. When you have these mutual aid agreements in place, it's very clear about who's responsible for what, whose lead team, that kind of thing.
Excellent. Any questions for the city attorney?
May I have some?
Yes, please.
Just in talking with the chief as well, they did eventually find an outdated document. So this is just clearly updating any new language, state statutes, you know, so on and so forth, and getting a more current agreement in place.
Excellent. Hearing that, chair would entertain a motion to approve the updated mutual aid agreement.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries. Next, approve a letter of support for the 2024 emergency ambulance service aid. Chief Manasseh, do you want to come up and just give a quick rundown of how this came out really fast and furious?
Uh, yeah, thank you, mayor. So the kind of nuts and bolts of this is our professional services group, the Minnesota Ambulance Association, sent this out that there was, the final hearing was last Friday, and if we wanted to get on and support this by letter of support or show of support, that it needed to be in by last Thursday at 5:00 PM. So I did draft a letter. I had it approved by both Betty and Harley, or Mayor Droba, sorry. And Mayor Droba and myself both signed it. We did, I did request this to be on just more so as notification to the council that this went out. So it is already gone. So I guess if you don't approve it, I can't take it back at this point. But it was already sent out and just showing our support to the emergency services aid bill that they're looking to pass. And this is the $125 million, I believe it is, to get in the hands of rural ambulance services to kind of fill that gap and fill that void until legislation or rule changes or whatever it may be in the future happens. So it's kind of a temporary placement, one-time temporary placement of money to help all of us get through.
Is this the money that can be only used to pay down our debt? Or rather, is this something that's going to be able to use for general operations, even though it's kind of?
This would be one, this is the one-time, one-time stop loss to try to pick up our debt.
Yeah, so, and. I just wanted to make sure, I thought it was.
Yes, that's the conversation at hand, but that is not laid out yet exactly how that is.
Okay, this money, they haven't totally decided.
Yeah, so the language is a little bit loose. The bill is written, and it basically that there is going to be a formula of how to apply for the money, but it doesn't say what it is. So, you know, there's just stuff like that. So it's getting that bill moved forward.
And we'll take it either way.
All right. Any questions for Chief Manasseh? Hearing none, chair would entertain a motion to approve that letter.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councillor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by councillor Kayler. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yep, that's good. Public works recommendations. Approve an automatic systems company proposal for International Falls SCADA improvements for the water treatment plant, Tower One, Tower Two, lift station seven, lift station 17 with funding from Water and Sanitary Sewer. Chair would entertain a motion for that approval.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by councillor Wegner. Would our city engineer like to come and talk to us about this little project that we have going on?
Sure. Over the last few years, we haven't had the SCADA system working for Tower One since we started that project. So in talking with Ted, we wanted to update the SCADA system, the control system from the water plant, so we can control the towers, control the water levels on the towers. And we would like to get this done prior to taking Tower Two offline because that is currently what we're controlling our water treatment plant for, with right now. But we're going to be taking that off as part of that project to rehab it. We want to get Tower One ready with new SCADA and also for our lift stations. We'll be using this for our lift stations going forward, so.
So this is important, and when this is all down the port part, we're going to have some redundancy and like backup too.
Correct, yes.
Which is probably very important with the system here. In case one goes down automatically. In theory, I realize, you didn't go that.
Tower One is the industrial avenue?
Yes.
Water tower?
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Don't go anywhere, these are all public works. You probably know all the answers. All right.
Mayor Walton won't know before we could get you to believe that we knew the answers every time.
I'll tell you what, I always knew a lot more about public works and the projects when we had public works in the afternoon and I was at all of those meetings, so. All right, approve service agreement with Silversmith Incorporated, DBA Silversmith Data for software and data service and asset management for client-specific data, including two GPS devices with funding from capital outlay, water, and sewer funds as budgeted expenses. Tell us about that.
Sure. Silversmith is an asset management system that uses GIS, it uses the Google-based GIS. We've been looking for one for, since I was brought on board. This is a tool that we'll be able to use, be able to document things and tie it to the GIS system, whether it be meters, valves, hydrants, you know, tree. It'll also do some work orders that we can tie to geological locations across town, so. Plus equipment for the garage. And there is an inventory component too. If we wanted to take advantage of that, we can monitor our inventory with it, so.
So that was one of the things that, again, just like you said, when you first got on, when I was really starting to understand the public works and system. So this will do work orders as well. So if we have an issue, we can put stuff on there, and it'll keep a time stream of when the work order came in, when we first looked at it, when we put it together.
Correct.
Excellent.
Yes.
And I think one of the most important things, actually, you're going to cut down time looking for things, right? When you're going to fix a meter or whatever, you know you'll have it, you know where to go to it.
And this all is added to our system, or is this a new system?
This is based on Google GIS, so it's not necessarily tied to our existing GIS. We'll be able to transfer information back and forth, but it doesn't do it automatically, but that's not an issue.
Excellent. Any other questions? So chair would entertain a motion to move forward with the service agreement with Silversmith.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by councillor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have approved engineering scope and fee for water distribution system. Tell us about that.
Yes, this is a modeling for the water system, and it will allow us to find weak spots in the system. It'll also be a tool we can use for if we're going to do any water main extensions. We'll know if we have capacity on those lines. And it's a tool you can use for designing hydrant flushing. You know which hydrants to flush when to clean the system the best, so. A lot of our communities do it. It's a very powerful tool, so.
Excellent. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that engineering scope and fee for water.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Not a motion from councillor Holden, a second by councillor Wegner. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries. Thank you. All right, committee of the whole recommendations. Approve the draft bloodborne pathogen exposure control plan. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by councillor Kayler.
Second.
Second by councillor Wegner. Any questions, concerns? Sad that we haven't had this in place for years. Call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, the big one on the agenda, probably the most expensive item we'll have in a little while. Approve ordering two 2024 Horton Type III ambulances, custom unit 533 from Premier Specialty Vehicles with the anticipated delivery in 650 to 690 days from the order date as budgeted. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by councillor Holden.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Wegner. Discussion? Chief, we're saying we're going to stay in the ambulance game. We're, we understand how important it is, and we do have aging infrastructure. We have pushed it off for a long time. The conversation at the committee of the whole was to purchase two ambulances now and in 2025, or in this year as we work our budget for 2025, to anticipate purchasing one more ambulance. So we are, we are working through our fleet to keep our ambulances safe and on the road, so. Very excited about that.
And if you notice, two of the last claims we put in, there's been a lot of ambulance stuff in there. You know, so that's, you know, trying to keep them going and stuff. So hopefully, we can keep doing that for a couple of years.
I want to say again, thank you to Adam for giving us the mileage on the ambulances so we understood where we were at with why we needed to order new ambulances because of heavy mileage and to make sure that we're getting the people to the right spot. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, then, if we're just thanking people, I want to throw out a thank you to both Chief Manasseh and Chief Koschek for having the conversation at one of our meetings about having a public safety committee. I think that that is something that we have missed in the past and being able to have the frank conversations in a smaller committee to be able to bring these forward, just as we do with public works and HR and everything, or any other ones that we're having committees for, I think really truly makes sense. So I really appreciate you because I think that that's where this conversation had started and it's worked its way out, so greatly appreciate that. So we have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, approve the appointment of councillor Kayler and councillor Wegner to the Airport Steering Committee as requested by the county city roundtable meeting of February 5th, 2024. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor, oh, I forgot your name, Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Wegner, third by councillor Holden.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next is discuss review of the draft updated home rule charter as presented by the Charter Commission. We're not going to make any action on this, but I'd like to hand off to councillor Kayler as the president of the Charter Commission.
I am the chair.
Chair.
Chair, yeah, chair, president.
Give us a background of where we're at.
Short straw.
You weren't, there was a lot of people at that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, it's ganged up, but anyhow. Yeah, while we, and as Lisa put in the letter she drafted to us, it's going on three years now. Anyhow, we, the Charter Commission decided to go full bore, redo the charter, instead of just going through, going up, nothing needs to be changed. So we did that. We went through, we rewrote it. I don't know if that's appropriate, rewrote it, but I guess it is. We made it more understandable, easier to read, we think. But everything's the same, it's just worded different. And the people that were on the commission, I commend them and thank them for the time and effort. It was, and Lisa can attest, and Betty, when she was, it was a diligent, time-consuming process. Had a lot of discussions about the different points in there. So now we have it, and the next step is we have to decide how we want to pass that to the community. We can pass it, now if I get some of this wrong, as a council, we can pass to approve it, just with updates. There are a few amendments in there to do with bodying and stuff, but we've already taken care of that. Or you guys took care of it as a council a couple of years ago. And then we got rid of the Civil Service Commission, that's out there now. But we did that a couple of years ago for the police department. So it's really just in the wording, and we find it's very much easier to read. And if you ever looked at the two and read them, I think you would agree. So now we got to decide, we need to look at it and then bring it back to council to vote on if we want to accept the changes. If not, it'll go back to the commission to do some updates. And I don't know if we'll find another nine people to do it, but yeah, that's where we're at. But I, and we did discuss that when we put it on to decide to accept it, well, then it's going to be by ordinance, I believe. And so we're going to have to have two readings, then we'd have some space in between the two readings so people could, the public could come and view it. If we can, put it online and just have it available here during business office hours of two different ones to read, then we'd come back, read it again, and then that will be our new charter. If that's the way we want to go, the other way is have a special election, which I don't really think we need to do or want to do because it's not changing anything. It's just how it's presented, formatted. Good word, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. So I think the conversation that we had at the committee of the whole meeting was to just bring it up at this meeting, have a quick conversation about it. At our first meeting next month, we would have our first reading. Then we may take two meetings off for public input, for people to be able to look at it, and then have our second reading a month later, just so folks can look at it. But again, there isn't anything that is big changes in how it's presented because that's one of the things that I think we've all learned at the League of Minnesota Cities things is the information that you give out to the community, it needs to be readable so that the average person can understand what it says. And the with to and the there.
Yeah, it's, we don't have as much as that in there.
Yep, so I think that that's what the game plan was.
Yeah, that's always.
I don't think we need to have a motion, we just put it on the next agenda for the first reading, please.
If I can just add to as well, mayor and council, that part of this, also, they have already worked through TAF law.
Yep.
And they've been on board and helping guide the Charter Commission as well through the process and, you know, understanding some of the legality of some of the sections on, you know, what is legal or not, you know. So a lot of it refers to current state statute instead of a specific, you know, number or dollar amount, if that's the case in certain areas, whatever current state statute is at that time. So as state statute changes, some of that changes, you know, on a regular basis. So you're not continually having to go back and update your charter as well.
Correct.
So.
Chief Manasseh, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I'm just, I have a, I guess, a little change I want to leave. How do you want that brought forward? Do you want it at the next Charter Commission meeting? Or just councillor Kayler, or how is that?
I would talk to councillor Kayler, and we'll go from there because it'll be public input if there's something that needs to be changed, so. And I said this last week at our committee of the whole meeting. When I first got appointed mayor, this was one of the most important things that I thought we needed to do, not to redo the charter, but the Charter Commission had. had a very large amount of non-active members. So we went through a couple of different processes to get names to the District Judge, so that we could get new people on the, the committee. Anyone that wanted to stay on the committee was welcome to stay on the committee, but there were a lot of folks that were ready to get off after being on the Charter Commission for many, many years. And the approach that, that we took was trying to get a diverse group of people, from young and old, male, female, people that worked in the retail industry, people that worked in manufacturing. So we tried to get a, a, a large data pool of people that have different viewpoints of, of our city and why they choose to be here and what they do here. And I think it was very beneficial, because they, they really jumped at the opportunity to, to do this. And Councilor Kayler did not get the short straw. He was not on our City Council at the time. And when, when he was on that committee, and I believe he was appointed because he was a past City Councilor, and I, I think that you, you sell yourself very short. It was not because of the short straw, it was because you were willing to, to work with those folks and really put this together, and it has taken a long time, but it's, it's done and it's right.
Yeah.
So, thank you so much. So we'll just put this on our next council agenda, and we'll go from there. All right, we'll go to, any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we will go to the reports of the administrator.
Mayor, I just have one update. As the, as recommended or requested out of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, I did reach out to Dan, and I'm gonna blow his last name, but Donna, Donna Haye, I believe, from Holden Mink regarding our wetlands. And as he was working through the wetlands document with me online, he said it's a very cumbersome file and things, he's looking into it, he, he thinks there's possibly more there than that letter, but he could not confirm that until he did some more research, and he, we spoke on Wednesday, so he is working on that as requested. So there's a chance we do have more than the six point six credits that were originally sent to us in November.
Excellent. Anything else?
Nothing further.
Uh, City Attorney?
I don't have anything.
Excellent. Department Heads? All right, we'll go to the reports of the Mayor, Council Committees, Boards and Commissions. Anybody have anything to bring forward?
We had a really good meeting today, public safety this afternoon. Proud of the way the Chiefs conduct themselves, and we had some really good discussion, public safety in the future, and then the purchasing of ambulances, and the, which we did tonight. And I'm happy that the City of International Falls formed a public safety committee like what we were talking about, and it's going really good, and a lot of good conversation. So, appreciate it.
Excellent. Anybody else have anything? All right, we'll go on to Audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? Please come forward, Jay.
Chief Dill? Twenty-six oh one Second Avenue East. Short meeting tonight, so I'll be as respectful as I can of your time, Mayor and Council. Just a few questions for you, really just two issues that I've got here. First one being the one percent local option sales tax. Believe that went on the ballot back in twenty eighteen, I think sixty-six percent of the community voted to have that. Was that enacted in twenty nineteen, Mayor?
I don't know the exact year. It, it's twenty nineteen or early twenty twenty, I, I don't know the date.
Okay. No, I, I had heard that the, the fund balance and that, that the tax had exceeded the projections. Any idea what that number's been since inception?
In the total dollar amount, I do not know. It, it has ran hundreds of thousands of dollars more than expected.
Good, that's a good thing. My question with that is, who's paying that tax?
Anyone who's purchasing items in International Falls.
Okay. Is what I'd like to bring up about it is, I know the Airport Steering Committee is being set and whatnot, but that zip code, I believe, or excuse me, that tax goes by zip code, and we're talked a little bit about tax disparity with the funding of the airport. There's two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two residents in the five six six four nine zip code that live outside of the city. So there are people contributing out on Gold Shore and Dove Island and out past the why not, they're paying into that fund, and that, there's some disparity there. So, you know, where this is all going, obviously there's been some tension over it, and this is usually what happens with tax disparity, it's, it's controversial, and there's always these implications, like you may be familiar with Cabotogoma Township, when the Cook Hospital was going broke in the eighties, and Senator Johnson happened to be the Senate Tax Chair, and he got them a district, and Cabotogoma can't get off, get out of it. So that one percent sales tax, you know, there's some onus on both here, and I just, I want that to be out there, that the city residents, I don't think anybody is disagreeing that more of the tax burden falls on city residents, but then we've got that whole benefit thing.
But before you go any farther on that, the only way that they're being taxed on that is if they purchase something online. And so with that being said, through the Department of Revenue, they save those receipts, they can get those funds back if they live outside the city. So, and I realize not everyone is able to do that, or saves those receipts, or whatever, but that isn't how the International Falls put that together, that's the way how the State Department of Revenue does it, is by zip code. And we have asked to, if there's a way to get International Falls the zip code for our city limits, but that's on a federal level. So there is ways for those folks to get refunded, if they live outside the city limits of International Falls.
Thank you, and, you know, in regard to that, is where I'm going, you know, was reasonability. You know, I could have a second job hauling around the Amazon boxes and Walmart boxes in my house, but, you know, with that, yes, they can, but also if the funding mechanism for the airport changes, that's like telling somebody in Big Falls, you can't fly out of Bemidji, you're paying for it, drive here and use it. So I'm just putting out there some give and take, and Councilman Holden, I wanna thank you for your support at the airport, that's appreciated. With this tax disparity, and this is my last issue, like I said, I wanna be respectful of your time. Local government aid, that big increase this year. So, we had a pretty incredible governor and state representative a long time ago, Governor Wendy Anderson, and what became Speaker of the House, Irvin Anderson, Highway Fifty-three's named after him. And they had the Minnesota Miracle back in the seventies, and that was a big deal, the tax disparity, because it got our rural communities the aid that we weren't getting. But with that, International Falls has ultra-specific LGA in the community. Actually, I think there's only about five cities in the state, don't hold that to me, it could be more, it could be less, but it's really specific. And it's specific because in a lot of that testimony, back, you know, fifty years ago, forty years ago, you know, we're, we have this regionality issue at the north end of the state, and in that testimony, that LGA formula was created for the ambulance and for the airport. So at some point, I'd like to share that with you, that there's reasons why we get that much aid, and I keep using the airport, I could use the ambulance, they'll use the airport, I'm more familiar with it. You know, obviously, we're addressing some of these things as a community, because we're running out of money. I think if we had a big bank account full, then we would just pay for all the services everybody wanted. But I think one of the things we have to be careful with, with that LGA is, that's not a given. Governor Palenti, when he wasn't gonna raise taxes and balance the state budget, was a big deal in International Falls. But with the airport and the funding mechanism, I think we're getting a fair shake. I understand some don't, but, you know, if the county takes some more of that burden, Mayor Fabian over in Roseville, Mayor Cuffey down in Virginia, if that ambulance and airport was in that testimony for that LGA the city got, you know, this is really a tricky deal. And who's to say, if we're gonna go down this path, you know, we have Rainier, Little Fork, Big Falls, if the county's gonna foot more of this bill, there's gonna be people bringing this up. And I've seen this LGA play out so many times, I didn't have a choice when I grew up, I had to be involved with politics, I'm an only child, so it's just, we lived on an island, it's what I got to listen to all day. But I'm just trying to share that this is a really critical thing, and I know you're having budget constraints, and that seems to be what's being talked about, but there's a lot of really good people that brought this together for our community, and I really hope that it can stay that way, cuz that's what really ties us all in, and International Falls really is the benevolent grandfather of the whole county, so I care about this a lot, and thank you for your time.
Can I ask you one question, cuz it seems like you do know a lot about the airports, and, and I, I appreciate your wisdom. What, what makes what we're looking at doing so much differently than what Bemidji did? Bemidji ended up, was in a joint powers agreement with Beltrami County, to the best of my knowledge, and they got out of that, and ended up going to a taxing district to make it a better, a fairer shake. The conversations that we're having with, with the League of Minnesota Cities, the, the folks that have been involved in this in other places, they're telling us that, that we are paying unfair disadvantage to the residents of International Falls. So my question is, when, when we're looking at doing it, 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 it's inconvenient, but when other cities do it, it, it's a solution. Help me understand that.
I'd be happy to. One is unfortunately, it's the politics, not local politics particularly. You know, there's, for instance, Chairman Rest of the Senate Taxing District, believe she put a moratorium on taxes, or on new taxing districts for a couple of years. Bemidji had a really unique situation down there, that about, I believe, and don't quote me, I don't have it here, but that county area, they had about seventy-five percent of their traffic, I think it was twenty-five percent of their traffic coming from each of these individual counties. So when everybody wants to, they, they got out of an agreement, but they built a new one, and it actually was more inclusive and made a lot of sense, well, that's easy to sell to the Senate Tax Chair. When we're up here, and I give no, very little chance of getting a taxing district here, we kind of already have one, by my math, I understand we're paying more in the city, some of that onus and burden is on us, but we also get all the benefit, the bed tax receipts, all that one percent money people get off the airline in the summertime.
But the county's getting the same five percent?
Well, the county is a higher government power, they have their half a penny, just like St. Louis County and many other counties do.
Right, but where, 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 I, I question the, and, and again, I love this dialogue, I love dialogue, I would love to sit down and have coffee with you, let's, let's figure this out. But my, my question is, if International Falls is getting the greatest, the greatest benefit of having the airport, which I, I do agree with, you and I are on the same page on that one. If we're getting the best benefit, and we sit in Koochin County, and Koochin County is getting the same benefit, I don't believe, and, and this is where I think we're starting to differ, I don't believe that a resident in International Falls should have to pay more than their neighbor four houses out of town, cuz that, that person that's four houses out of town has the same benefit for that airport as a resident in International Falls. And arguably, International Falls residents don't have the same financial ability as the folks that live outside, when you start looking at the lake, you start looking at the people that own properties for recreational, recreational land for hunting and fishing. So now you're looking at the residents of International Falls, that this could be literally their only home, that are probably not gonna be utilizing the airport as much for A, work, or B, for, for personal vacations, but these are the folks that are paying for it. And I also agree with you that it is a huge advantage for our paper mill, for everybody, but we're all in this together, we're all in Koochin County, we are all literally the same people, and as we have these conversations about what's good for the area, what's good for Koochin County is good for International Falls, and what's good for International Falls is good for Koochin County. And I just wanna make sure that our residents are not unfairly being taxed for the airport, but we are, we're ninety-five percent on the exact same page.
Well, I think close, but what you said about, you know, living three doors down out in the county, versus living in the city and that whole equality thing, and Counselor Holden, I'd like to leave you out of this, because I, I've heard economic development more out of you than any other counselor, and I appreciate that, I'm a businessman, so that means something to me. But it's that whole economic development thing, and that's tricky at best, but it comes with a cost. When we talk about the equality of the city and income disparity, which I think you're referencing, you've mentioned, you know, we have poor people here, we have wealthy people,
Absolutely.
But is, is where the misunderstanding is with that philosophy, as we talk about this, is that taxes are wildly regressive. We can tax the wealthy, and they pay it, and they complain a lot to at times, you can tax the middle class, and they usually can pay it, but the poor can't, and we keep raising the taxes on the poor. And so that's the whole thing there.
But in the event that we, we worked a deal with the county, where the city paid twenty-five percent of the airport, or thirty-three percent of the airport, and the county picked up the other side, and it balances a little bit more, the residents of International Falls, any way you slice it, any way you slice that, 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 that formula, the residents of International Falls pay more, because they are still, if it was ninety-nine, one, one percent, the residents of International Falls still pay more, because they're paying one percent, and then they're paying their county taxes as well. So you're right, taxes are regressive, I, I, I completely agree with you, but my argument still stands at that the residents of International Falls should not have to pay more when they get the same benefit as the rest of the taxpayers in the county. Because the county gets the same benefits as International Falls.
Have you ever considered starting your own county? That would solve the whole issue.
I don't think you can donut hole. I don't think you can donut hole a county, just like you can't donut hole a, a city or a, a city, but I, I, I think the council is a hundred percent wanting to work with the, the county on this. We, we have today had the conversation, we're putting two people onto a task force to hammer this out, I have had conversations with a handful of lobbyists at the state, just having the conversation that, of what, what our goals are. You know, we, we see that there is some issues, we want to move forward, and I, I have said to all of them how important we do believe the airport is. It is a funding issue, and we wanna sit down and have those conversations. We're not, this is not a fight with the county, this is, this is a updating. We're not, this is not a fight with the county, this is updating of an agreement, it's a five-year agreement, we have years to get to it, but we want to get to that point where we have an agreement moving forward.
Well, thank you, that's, you know, and I just wanted to, I think the tone is different since I was, I just want to point out that these things get really tricky in a hurry, and with some of the fireworks that have happened, there's a, the devil's always in the details with these things, so that's something I'm concerned about. But thank you for your time, Mayor.
Greatly appreciate it.
I also want to tell you something too, that I'm interested in, is our steering committee, is that we get together and have good conversation. I'm always one of those that want, I call it mending the bridge between the county and the city. I'm hoping that happens, that's what I'm shooting for. Got a couple of the counselors that are going to be sitting on that steering committee, and I'm hoping they can work things out to everybody's liking, and that's my hope.
Good, well, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Greg.
Yep, you bet.
Any, anyone else like to come forward? All right, we have correspondence in your packet, you have the Koochin County Board Minutes of January 23rd, you have the Koochin County Board of Commissioners meeting of February 13th, and International Falls Public Library Board meeting for February 14th. Our next meeting will be on Monday, March 4th, this meeting is adjourned.